Tonight we are having a joint public hearing between Penn Township Commissioners and the Penn Traffic School Board to approve the LERTA ordinance.
Yeah, I will. Just one quick clarification, Mrs. Ising. Tonight's just a public hearing for their input for the LERTA. The Commissioners will actually approve the LERTA at one of their subsequent meetings after hearing comments from the Board or any citizens that may be interested. I did put in front of everyone a copy of that ordinance. I believe that it has been summarized at prior previous meetings that you had, but this is the final version. The properties have not changed. The properties involved would be all of those in the Bushy Run Corporate Park on Mellon Road as well as the properties surrounding the Rite Aid Drugstore up here at the corner of Pleasant Valley Road and Route 130. There are two parcels there, one owned by Charleroy Federal, the other by the developer where the anticipated Speedway may hopefully be constructed. The only change that has occurred, and I believe you also have been briefed on this, is that the LERTA was changed from a potential of a three-year abatement at 100% per each year to a five-year abatement with the fourth year being a 50% abatement and the fifth year being a 25% abatement. It does take cooperation of both the School Board and the County, or the Township Commissioners, to approve this conceptually. After assuming that approval occurs, it then goes to the County, and we have with us tonight Ben Wetzel, who's the Business Development Director from the Westmoreland County IDC. Mr. Wetzel, is there anything you'd like to add to this? He do have a chart, I know. He has some charts that shows what typically a LERTA has done tax-wise in other districts, and I don't believe you have enough of those to distribute yet, but we can certainly...
I do not, and I will apologize for that. I'll just provide the stats and I'll email them to Bruce and then he can distribute them to everyone. Basically, just to sum it up is, we have, we own 16 industrial parks throughout Westmoreland County. Currently, there are four parks that have this LERTA program. The Penn Township Park, just down the street from the Bushy Run Park, is actually our oldest LERTA program, the first one put in place. And basically of those four, just a few stats, a couple of them have some escalating programs to them, but basically the gist of it is, in those, in those four parks, we have almost 50 companies now employed, 18 in Penn Township here, 10 companies in North Huntington Township, eight companies in South Huntington Township, and 10 companies in our Westmoreland Airport by the, by the Latrobe Airport. So that's, you know, a total of 46 companies that we've been able to attract into our industrial parks over the years, and I think a large part of that has to do with the, the draw of the LERTA, and I even, we have some information, you know, that, that provides over 2,600 employees. So, and I have some information just regarding, as I said, that I will pass on. It has, you know, tax revenue that we are able to generate from those parks per year, and even broken down as far as county, township, and school. So, I will provide that to Bruce, but we do feel that it is a, a program that has worked for us, you know, that we still make, make companies where our Penn Township Park is a, is a full park, fully occupied park. So it's, it's really a, a good program, has been for us for years. So, I'll provide the, the information to Bruce if you have any questions, obviously.
Thank you. Let me say one other thing. The Commissioners, if I may speak for you gentlemen, this isn't so much about tax abatement. That's an attraction to get businesses to come into Penn Township. We know, for example, that other surrounding municipalities have done similar things. North Huntington Township has just completed one at the intersection of Route 30 and the Turnpike. So if we as Penn Township want to be competitive and get businesses and draw them into our areas, or entice ones that are here now in this industrial park to expand, we have to go head-to-head and compete with other municipalities. So that's the primary reason, and I hope you keep that in mind as you think about this. Again, it's not so much the abatement issue, because most of this is vacant land. You're getting essentially no taxes on vacant land right now. So if we can get a business in, even if you abate the taxes for several years incrementally, that's an improvement that we can all see down the road, plus you've created jobs, brought industry into the region. So, having said that, I'm prepared to answer any questions anyone may have to the best of my ability.
Bruce, appreciate you guys coming tonight. What happens if a company who's interested in taking advantage of the LERTA, they come in, and do they have to stay the length of the, of the LERTA deal, which is five years? Or if they come in in four years, is there some sort of penalty for them if they get out of it before the end of the agreed-upon terms?
The statute provides that the LERTA continues for the term. So, if there's a transfer, you know, they would get the exemption for the balance of the period. There's no penalty if they leave, you know, if they go bankrupt, et cetera. There's no penalty.
So there's always that risk.
There's always that risk, but generally, and I think the County could probably speak to that more than we can, because the County has had more experience with it.
I, I think without having, you know, exact examples or figures to answer that, I will say the one thing that kind of touches on what, that Bruce already said, I think the one thing you have to look at with this LERTA program, one of the biggest benefits is, you know, people always think about the attraction, which is a great thing, but the retention of those jobs and the expansion of those current companies that are already here is probably a bigger point. You know, the, the home run hit is always getting the new companies in there, but the expansion of current companies, allowing them to grow and foster that, and helping them to foster that growth by offering something like this is just as vital and maybe even more vital, but we, we see that much more often. So I understand what you're saying about the risk of it, but I would say that I think a lot of times, some of the benefits you will see is, is companies that are expanding, not just the attraction. And the expanded companies, if they're already here, they're probably not going to, you know, want to leave, so.
Do you hear that quite often, that businesses are already in the area, that they're going for some relief, tax relief, to extend their business?
Oh, every one of them, if they could. I mean, quite honestly, I mean, obviously, it is, it provides a, a good incentive for them. And as Bruce said, it's not, the only benefit is the abatement. It's an incentive for them to help them along, and it would provide, you know, some great assistance to them, but it also provides, as I kind of showed, that the, the assistance to the community has definitely helped our parks.
And if I can remind the Board, as I provided you at the last meeting, keeping in mind that LERTA, when taxes are being paid, let's assume that you've got the property and you already have an existing building. The taxes that are being paid on that property and that existing building continue to be paid. They're not reduced in any way, shape, or form. What's happening is, is that any new renovation or any new building that occurs, there is, for lack of a better term, a delay in them having to pay extra tax on that new development. So if I can, as a company, add 40% footage to my already existing company, I'm still paying taxes on what I was paying last year and years before that. I'm still paying tax, but now that 40% of new construction, I get the abatement under this resolution, 100% of the new tax, the additional tax, for that additional footage for the first three years, and then 50%, 25%, I think is the way it's written. So then, five years from now, I'm now paying 100% of the total tax on the appraised value of everything. So you're not losing anything. What you're doing is you're gaining, and you're gaining it because of the incentive to build without having that extra expense on the part of the business owner.
And the other thing that the ordinance provides is that if a new business comes in and builds, let's say they get to the fourth year, now they decide they want to expand. They can't come back and ask for another five years. You know, it's, it's that five-year period. The LERTA will be in existence for as long as there is vacant property within the LERTA area, but the exemption is a maximum of five years.
Another important factor I'd like to add, the, the tax relief is only on the property. Even if the business moves out of town, they're not picking up their building and taking it with them. The tax that's owed on that building will still be there, so somebody will be responsible to pay that tax. So, I don't think there's any way we're moving backwards here. I think it's all forward movement. There's, it's, right now you have vacant ground, you're getting the vacant ground taxes. You're not going to lose that. You're going to, if you move forward and put anything on that property, you gain.
The other purpose of this hearing is to, just to outline the boundaries of the LERTA, and Mr. Light has given you the boundaries that we propose. Does the School Board have any questions about those boundaries or suggestions for any other properties that may qualify for the LERTA?
I, yeah, I was curious. Obviously with the property up, the crossroads up here, retail is included in this. What about the Penn Crossing area? There's, there's quite a bit of vacant space there that, there's always been rumors of McDonald's and Sheetz and something like that going on. Is there a reason that wasn't included?
There is not. At this time, we had requests from potential developers for, for the parcels that are involved. We have not heard any such requests from the developer of Penn Crossing. Certainly, there's nothing to prohibit that from happening again in the future.
I got, one thing I could add, is we're very limited to where we can have, because of our road structure, infrastructure, where we can have commercial growth and development like this. So whenever it comes about, we're willing to entertain this type of thing. Like Bruce said, there's nowhere right now in that area of Penn's crossings where there anybody's come in with anything rock solid. And I think we had a get-go last year, and that pulled out. But if they come back, you know, I'm sure we'd entertain that.
I would say if there was a third potentially viable candidate, that would be the area we could look at, but the two that we're looking at now, we actually have, we have people in the wings waiting for the outcome of this.
I'd like to add, Mr. Mockr, I think you was on board then, and I know I was definitely here, because I approved it, and Sally Betty was here too, and she approved it. Back in the 80s, I got the wrong word each year. Westmoreland County Development Association, they came to us and they asked, and that's how, Mr. Wetzel just said it, they asked for three-year tax exoneration for what is now, you call the Mellon Plan out there next to the Bushy Run Community College, and the Board unanimously approved it. And now, of course, North Huntington gets involved and et cetera, but we were one of the frontrunners in this. And why it went stagnant for over 25 years, I don't know. I don't know what happened. It, it just stopped? Is there a reason why, if this continued? Skip, you have any reason for that?
I think, first, you're really dating us.
What are you going to do?
Probably your two oldest here. I, I think what happened was, and it's all the philosophy of the Boards, the, the Township Commissioners on growth, et cetera. What we did at that time, we had a Board that's philosophy was commercial growth. That sort of changed as the years went on to more of a bedroom community type of growth. Now, the new Board is back, I think, into the, the other side, saying we need commercial growth. And, you know, commercial growth is great for the Township, it's great for the school district. You don't have to provide any services for commercial growth, you know. We did a study years ago, a couple years ago, on the impact that commercial growth has on our police force, how much it costs us vis-à-vis how much it would cost us for, for single-family residences. And it's, Bruce, it was over a dollar ten?
Yes. For... How about that number?
It costs us a dollar ten per, for each single-family residence in, in taxes, and it was about 87 cents or 86 cents for commercial. So, you know, it, it's really a boon to everybody if we can get commercial growth. I mean, this is a real enticement.
We didn't have this kind of meeting. We just, we just agreed unanimously.
No, we, yeah, no, we had a meeting. We had the...
Was there a meeting like this?
Yep. We had it in the old, yep.
Okay, but it was really...
We had it in the auditorium.
Formality. It was nothing, it was, everybody was unanimous, the win-win situation, just like this right now, is a win-win situation. I just, you know, okay.
Another partial answer on Mr. Petrusi's question, the, the old LERTA, I have both, both documents relating to the old LERTA, 87 and 90.
What was it called, Dell? What was the exact terminology? Westmoreland?
County Industrial Development.
Okay, County Industrial Development.
But what you have to remember, that, that caused or helped a lot of growth, well, that growth has just recently dissipated. That park just got built out. So we really, as a community development director, I, I get frustrated trying to help face people in different places in the community, give them some reasons to come here. Our zoning doesn't really have a lot of room to breathe in it. Now this, with that park being built, this will give us some more room to talk to people. The infrastructure's reasonably in there. We have the, the good, the traffic corridor for outside Mellon Road, which these people, that's one of the things that gets them here looking, but then they always ask me, what about a little bit of tax abatement for future, for future? I can never give them a yes on that.
I know the school district was always very cooperative, very cooperative.
And also at this public meeting, if there's any public comment, you know, it's open for public comment. If anyone in the audience that's spread out has any questions or comments, we would be glad to ask, answer the questions.
You know, Skip, I still can't remember.
Sally, probably.
When you say we did, I, I trust your word. I don't ever call it a game, but it's easy to judge. That's the best.
Sally?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think it's a win-win. But I do have one question or maybe one concern. So Company A gets the tax abatement for four or five years, and then Company A decides you're no longer interested in being in the Penn Township site or having that addition. So now, if they sell or encourage Company B to come in, and down the road it'll be Company C, do they get any tax abatement, or is it just for the first one? Because I'm thinking like a Volkswagen Chrysler Sony.
No, it's not like that.
Okay, because great.
It's, it's, it's five years.
Period. Doesn't matter who's in that building.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. We're not, we're not going to give away, you know, the tax revenue for anything greater than the five-year period.
I just didn't want a revolving door.
No, it won't be a revolving door. That's prohibited. Under the Act, it's also prohibited the way I drafted the ordinance.
Thank you.
Bruce, is that where the court could...
Yes.
Wanted to make sure it didn't change.
Yeah, that's what we did at three that night.
I have a question following up on, which is question, say, Penn Crossing, we want to add that. What's involved in adding another parcel of land? Because, you know, we defined in this resolution the parcels of land that are involved. Now, say we want to expand on that list, do we meet again as a, as a group?
Yes.
Yes. Or, or, you know, the, the purpose of this meeting is to define the boundaries. That's one of the reasons this public meeting is held, this public hearing is held. If the Board would consider, we could add that parcel now, because, and because the ordinance has not been advertised for adoption yet. So we could add that parcel now if the Board was so inclined. Or, as Mr. Light said, if we had some requests later, we would have to start over, but we would have to create, we'd have to amend the LERTA ordinance, okay, to add that as a parcel.
Tony, the other thing is, let's assume that you go through with the LERTA as it's written, things develop very well, but there's an area that wouldn't otherwise develop as well, because it doesn't have the infrastructure that you have here. It doesn't have the road systems that I think someone said exists. It doesn't have the sewer and electricity and everything. Then, LERTA may not be the proper device to use to entice people to come in. And again, the example being the TIF that I told you about, that we handled, Southside Works, the TIF at the waterfront in Homestead. That's a different, it, it accomplishes much the same thing, but it's a different mechanism. And one of the things that it does is that the entities that are involved, the governmental entities, they create the infrastructure that then entices developers to come in, because now they don't have to pay to build roads and to put in sewage and put in electric and gas and all that other stuff, because it's already there.
And the Penn Crossing situation is soared to a port. Because this was set out to be commercial development and then multifamily development, et cetera. The multifamily development wouldn't qualify under the LERTA anyway, but the sewer line has to be extended by the developers in the future. So there's no infrastructure. The infrastructure, what you see out there is what's there. There's no additional roads, there's no additional sanitary sewer lines to service any of the other property. So, you know, the way the original plan was approved with the tentative, conditional approval, preliminary approval was, the rest of it was going to be multiple family or single-family dwellings, and that doesn't apply to LERTA either.
Okay.
And I don't know that any of the buildings out there could expand any to take advantage of the LERTA.
A brief comment about public perception. I know you're soliciting this evening in some form or capacity to do that, but law has been around for a long period of time. I've actually heard no criticism related to this whole concept, or, and if anything worse, I can say there's a difference. I'm going to tag this. Would you say that's generally what you're seeing?
We have not heard any, any adverse comments, you know.
Neither.
The, the Act, the LERTA Act requires us to take these steps before we can adopt the ordinance. So, but we have not, as far as I know, and Bruce, you haven't had any adverse. I mean, everybody wants to entice development, and it's not like we're going to be rezoning properties to allow uses to come in that a lot of citizens would be objecting to. These properties are already properly zoned for the type of use.
And the two, the two Boards sitting here are going to be faced with the dilemma year after year coming up about raising taxes to create revenue. This is a, this is one of the moves we could make to help stave off raising taxes by having commercial development. That's, it's, I think it's very important that we focus on the fact it's commercial only, and it's going to be one way to help stave off tax increases.
That'll help us too. We're doing our new zoning map coming up next month, like this month, our first hearing. But this will help to keep the balance, because the majority of people that live here would like to keep the character of the community the same. It's basically a 50% RR zone, I believe, the next zone.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, 50%. You can't have that if you don't get a proportional commercial development in here. So, that's why it's so important that, I guess, to, and I speak for the rest of the Board, we still want to keep the character of the community the same, rural residential community. We'll still have our bedroom, but instead of the high-density housing plans, these commercial developments will offset that tax base. No kids in the schools, you know, it's, it's a good deal, so.
Well, hopefully there'll be children in the schools, because people will move in and will be hired to work there, which will increase our revenue.
Not a influx of kids, like we're putting in 200 new homes, which, you know...
We need a lot of...
Causes you to... Causes you to build new schools.
Be very helpful to us right now, so.
I think part of the reason why you guys, the population of school, is because we didn't develop at the higher rate we were going on in the 90s, and it kind of tailored the, the growth off. So it kind of saved, back then there was talk of building new schools and that, and that kind of dissipated over the years.
Put us in quad A, Paul.
What's that?
And put us in quad A.
It did.
Cortina Marine, put us right in quad A.
Yes, it did.
We've had about a nine or 10-year declining enrollment trend here at the school district, and I do believe that if this, this school, this school district does a tremendous job. I, as the community development director, meet with a lot of people, and I quite frequently ask, what's, what's some of the biggest reasons you move here? It's almost always school district and a couple other things. The, the community development director and the school district.
Yeah, right.
But I absolutely...
Watch how you go on.
That's why I'm sitting here.
But the, the infrastructure also is, is another key issue, and the Penn Crossings area, if there is some discussion, I think there's time to do that, if not now, down the road, because the sewage authority right now is looking at trying to help do some things that would address the sewage issues up there. They have a long-range plan, but there's some time lapse in getting that implemented too.
If there are no, are there any citizen questions or comments?
I'll add also that there are copies of the ordinance and maps here for any of the citizens who wish to have one.
Then our portion of the public meeting hearing would be closed. What the next step would be is, at the next public meeting, the Commissioners will authorize the advert, hopefully authorize the advertisement of the ordinance. We will send you notice of when we're going to be adopting it, and then we would ask, obviously, your solicitor will advise you to pass the appropriate resolution consistent with that ordinance, and we will also send a copy to the County.
At this, one last thing I'd like to mention before our Commissioners leave, and thank you for coming, next time, some of this, that, you know, Bruce is retiring soon?
Next Friday.
Next Friday. We have to count that. We had our last PTOR meeting today. Bruce has been very instrumental with PTOR and with the Township as a whole. We appreciate everything he's done for our community over the last 20 years, and we wish him and his wife Vivian much fun.
Thank you.
While they retire.
Thank you very much.
And I believe we have Alex.
Alex Craziano, this is my replacement.
Go for it.
He's already on board, and...
I tried to discourage him today as much as I could by taking him around and showing him a bunch of horrors, but he was still not interested, so he's in here for the long haul now.
Yep. At our PTOR meeting, there's three of us TOR members left, and Bruce... Now, that is Randy Dreystein and myself, but Bruce has been, all new playgrounds you see, the new parks you see, been very, very instrumental. The, the Cervigno Level Green Elementary School, which was his elementary school, to Shelley Proskin Recreation Center, he's been down there relentlessly for so many times. He's very crafty, very mechanical, and he's, he showed a lot of it down there in that building, where it is because of Bruce's liking. He's going to be greatly missed.
And I see all the campaigns are for Bruce to take out?
Yeah, Bruce, they're all yours.
Bruce, enough for each of you to take one, please, but I have to thank Bruce. Every time I called him the last seven years, always gave me an answer, always gave me help, always gave me support, and I truly appreciate it for all, all the things you've ever done.
Thanks very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Give them a minute to clear out and walk us back to our meeting. All right, um, back to our meeting. We are going to, since we do have an item that we will be voting on, we were going to start with the roll call. Rex?
Uh, Mr. Ising.
I'm here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Neemek.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. All right, into special reports. Let's start with IU number seven. Mr. Leonard.
Okay, um, there has been distributed a summary that IU Board Meeting, and I, due to some issues at home, personal issues, I was unable to attend the meeting, but I did review the summary, and I would say it might be of interest to you folks to review that summary on your own. I'd only be giving you what I'm reading. I wasn't at the meeting, but there are some important things in there that were discussed, but our involvement is pretty limited with the IU at this point. So, that's the best I can do for report this month.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Dr. Trey, Library and Legislative Council.
Thank you, Madam President. One thing to leave in the library is that we're still, we bumped down a priority, but we still had to address one of the next three meetings, the, the possible revised distribution of assets for our libraries. Kind of again, bumped down priorities, we're talking $14,000, but again, we'll address it at some time, we believe, over the next three meetings. From the Legislative Council side, we do have a regional meeting scheduled, Southwest Region, next month, which I'll be attending. Data Scapes in grade at this time, but, and I don't like to get too positive about what's going on in our legislature, but that legislature, because so many things are tied under the category of stalled, or, or delayed, or insufficient votes. So, I'm not real optimistic. I don't mean to be cynical, but there are still bills out there on the Special Education Funding, a three-tiered system, that's supposedly going to equalize the payment or the support of the state and support for, from districts related to the, to special needs students and the degree of which they have a special need. Supposedly it's a fairer system, but it's also going to change the funding sequence in, in a number of school districts. Somewhat controversial, but at least it's a step probably ethically in the right direction. But it's stalls, where it seems to fit in the House at this time. The construction bill, we again thank Representative Dunbar for coming in and throwing his support and trying to drive an initiative to go in that direction, and there, it looks like there are, something is continuing on in some form of a variety of House bills to make it a better program and simplify the process of Plan Con and maybe get some money back into the system, but it's slow-moving, as they all are. We're worried about the tax collection status, that we got that terrible report related to the government, the budget, that we don't have enough money coming in through tax collection, so ultimately it's going to go back and affect us in what we're able to fund, which unfortunately falls back on the local taxpayers. And the, that's basically about it at this particular time. That's all I have, Madam President. President.
All right, thank you, Dr. Trey. Um, Mr. Petrusi, Carrera Tech.
Thank you, Madam President. The minister in your packet, uh, you also received this evening, you got the budget for next year, we will approve that budget, I hope, next, I believe next week, I hope, I'm not sure when exactly, it'll be before the beginning of this month or even next month. Um, our meeting was, um, April the 16th. Uh, we went over a few things that, um, last time I talked to you, we discussed security system, the three companies, the Bill of Johnson Controls, Security Systems of America, and Vector Security. And as we were, we were going to approve it last month, but then, uh, one of the bidders come in, they said, why don't you add the EVAC? Now, an EVAC is the, um, not only the alarm going off, but a voice comes on saying it's code red, code blue, one could be, you know, it describes whether if it's a fire alarm or if it's a false alarm, or if it's a, unfortunately, we had our neighboring Franklin something like that, a very emergency alarm, and, but, this, it speaks to whatever color comes up, everybody's educated on it, and also comes through in the P A system, and, uh, we're going to give all three companies a chance to bid on it, and I hope our next meeting is May 21st, that we are going to approve that. Also, the, um, renovations, the roof is, uh, of course, the borders are done, the roof and the borders are done, that, the heating, I mean, the ventilation for the welding is also complete, and the roof is now, uh, 54% complete. If we get some warmer weather like this, supposed to be super the rest of this week, I'm sure we'll get a lot more accomplished. Um, um, we are hoping by June 30th that'll be done. Also, the oil tank removal, which I discussed with you for a few times now, we start, we start the second week of June, it'll take two weeks to extract that, and you have to leave it open for additional two weeks. Then, um, EPA comes in, or some inspection, they come in, they test the soil, if there's any moisture, they taste, they, they test the moisture, and also any air samplings around to make sure there are no contaminants, which can, there are no contaminants, and of course you fill over, and then you, uh, asphalt over top that, put it back to the simple road system was before. And now, I'm also, our resolution is going to be brought up to all the boards, that, uh, right now we're only allowed to spend $60,000 to board because we always went by the recommendations of the superintendents, the nine superintendents represent Central VOTEC, but now that's going to be changing because there hasn't been a high turnover in superintendents, so now all the, all the expenditures are going to come 100% from the J O C, which is the school board members, the nine school members that service the, uh, Central VOTEC. And we're going to ask this board and also all the other boards to support us on that, so the boards will be in complete control of all, all the spending, and the recommendation is still made by the superintendent's group, but, um, the final spending approval will become from all the school directors. Um, let me see, the graduation is next, uh, Monday. I am always here at Army, so I never get near a chance to attend them, but the graduation will be held at, um, West Warren County Community College. It's always packed, even upper, they said the upper deck is also packed, and the packing that, parking, they have to have shuttle system to bring, because all the parents and grandparents and friends, and, uh, the, through the graduation ceremony, which I think it starts at six o'clock next, or six or seven o'clock next, um, next Monday. And your goodie report, um, we had a salad bar with the, um, ranch, blue cheese, honey mustard dressing, assorted meat tray, cheese tray, assorted fruit, vegetable tray, chicken tender, spiky chicken bits, and, uh, chocolate vanilla strawberry parfaits, apple lattice pie, layloks, and ginger baked cobbers, which was, that's different, it was pretty good too. Okay, and our next meeting, I said, is, um, the 21st this month. That's all I have, Madam President.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Before you, uh, give off to air, the, you said the expenditures were now, of the nine districts were now going to come back to the boards for approval?
All the, no, our board, the, the J O C board, VOTEC board.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, it used to be that, well, all we did is mostly rubber stamp it. The, the superintendents, you know, they would recommend, because we did the educational process, but now the high turnover, you had superintendents come in Dallas, and they're not acquainted with what's going on in VOTEC, so we're going to be in complete control of all the spending now. But they can make recommendations to us, just like Dr. Harris does to us also. It'd be, it'd be that kind of relationship now, as compared to before, where we, like, we just mostly rubber stamped everything they asked for us to do.
There'd still be a liaison from every board, like yourself.
Oh, yes.
Voice our concerns.
Yes.
We just want to send the concerns.
Yes. That, that, nothing changes there. That, that's exactly, just the voting process, the board, the VOTEC board, I should have said it right, I should have been more specific. The VOTEC board has full control of all spending.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Okay, direct boards, Penn Township.
No report this evening, Madam President.
Okay, Trafford, back to Mr. Petrusi.
Our meeting was last Monday, April 28th. We're meeting on May the 8th, uh, which is this Thursday, um, for the, the design, for the, at 6:00 for the design for the Fairmont Avenue Playground. We're applying, I believe, for a $100,000 grant, and by the way, a new grant system, um, with the Commonwealth Grant, I think I mentioned this last meeting. Now, that'll be your report, I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't going to do that, I was even after you.
No, okay, well, no, I'll let you, it's really, the money they're making available now because Marcelle Shell is in, uh, it's really incredible. It's, uh, the Easter program, which was held in, um, April 12th, uh, went, went very well, nice turnout. Cleanup is May 17th. I received the, um, I think I meant, I mentioned last, the auction is coming, well, it will be February 28th, I haven't got that for you, but, uh, old parking meters in Trafford, I now have them aligned to my garage on the floor. Um, I have, um, the crank ones, the automatic ones still have, they still have value to them, but the crank ones, I have four singles and 13 doubles, um, and I tried to get keys made, uh, but they're government issued, you're not allowed to get government issued keys. So I talked to locksmith, Mr. Craig Tuchek, he's going to try to help me out, see if we can get the guts removed out of the, out of the, um, parking meters, and basically a little screwdriver to raise that arm up, and then put the arm back down again, but the parking meters, they are just, they still remain the same. On the BY, somebody wanted to start pony rides down there for a birthday party, we told them no horses down there for what they're planning on doing, the damage it'd do. The geese are, they're still geese, sometimes there are a lot of them, sometimes there's not many, but they're, um, they're very plentiful. Um, that we, oh, the, the walking track around the BY should be, um, uh, crushed limestone should be redone, has been done for about the past five or six years. The pavilions, um, they're almost all ready to be rented. The rentals will start on Labor Day weekend, and our next meeting is going to be the, uh, May the 19th, because, uh, last Monday of May, this, this, this month, of course, is Memorial Day, so that, that's all I have, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Penn Borough.
No report at this time.
Okay, well, that brings it to me with PTARC. All right, Nick was talking about some new grants that are out there. The previous grants for communities like our size was about 50% matching. These, this new grant money is 15% matching, which is a much better deal. Also, and I thought this was really interesting, you can use, um, grant money from another source to, as part of your matching for the program. So if you get grant, did I understand? I was surprised at that. So if I get so much from, a grant from one place, I can use that much money as part of my matching money on another grant, and they never used to allow that. So, that's a good thing. So, she has a couple grants in their works. Um, the fund balance is up approximately $10,000 from last year, we're at 89.5,000, yeah, 89.5,000 in our fund balance, mostly because of an increase in private contributions, uh, rentals down at the PTARC building, increased, uh, increased registrations in our programs, and the savings of Cheryl's, um, medical expenses. We, at the PTARC meeting, we mentioned this before, we celebrated Bruce Light's retirement, and, Nick, I'm surprised you didn't tell the goodie report there. I never, I never seen muffins that big. He wanted chocolate.
They were, they were huge.
He had chocolate chip muffins.
It's your department issue.
He wanted chocolate, I couldn't eat them, they had milk in them. You have chocolate chip mu- muffins, and then double chocolate chip muffins, they were the biggest things. So, I had to just kind of.
They were big.
I had to just kind of, like, do the Nick thing there. Okay. Um, the rec center, the income this year is approximately 45, 45, but the expenses, though, are up, they're at 7,600, 7,700. As we all know, we had a bad winter, so, uh, we had some very large gas bills, and they found a leaky toilet, and that tripled our water bill, um, because, you know, someone's not always in the building, so by the time they found it, we had gone through a lot of water, and of course, that, when your water bill goes up, your sewage bill goes up. Um, but as far as the rentals are concerned, we have 14, um, this year, we've had so far, we have 46 rentals, last year we had 31. Um, back to the medical savings, the, we estimate that from here forward to the end of the year, Cheryl will offer medical expenses, um, effective, uh, May 1st, and we are giving her a $250 compensation, or buyout, or whatever you call it. Um, the savings for PTARC from May 1st through the end of the year is going to be approximately $8,000. Uh, we've done fairly well with some of the more recent events. The father-daughter dance had the highest attendance ever. It was held down at the Winchester Room in Trafford, which is a.
Manchester.
Manchester, sorry.
Manchester.
Manchester, sorry, uh, which is the, um, which is a beautiful facility. We went down for a Boy Scout spaghetti dinner a few weeks ago, it's beautiful, uh, if you have an opportunity to attend something down there, it's just a great facility. The car crews, though, uh, we were down a little bit because the weather wasn't too good, but they still made approximately 500. Um, our total registration is pretty comparable to last year, we're up maybe 3%, no, no great number there. Um, some upcoming events, the triathlon is on June 21st, if you're interested, I have, um, a flyer to show you. We need a lot of volunteers, so if you want to, um, get involved, please let me know, or call the PTARC office. Um, the Bushy Run 5K is on July 13th, and the summer playground program is going to run from June 9th to August 1st. The ages are 6 to 13 for all playgrounds except Penn Borough, which is 5 to 12. And that is all I have. Okay, um, at this time, we're doing things a little bit out of order.
The foundation.
Sorry?
Foundation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. Dr. Harris, the foundation.
Just having one report.
Okay.
This week, we received a $5,000 grant from the Bachman family charitable fund, um, through the help of Cliff and Beverly Bachman, who own the Corner Store. So, it was a nice bonus from them, and their support, giving us the right, um, people to contact, and they brought in $5,000 to go back towards, um, teacher grants at the end of the year, so I appreciate it.
Great.
That's all.
Yeah, sorry for what I was missing there. Um, right now, we're going to do recognition of visitors, uh, we're doing things a little bit out of order. Um, we don't have anybody signed up, is there anyone who is interested in speaking? Okay. Um, we will not be breaking for executive session, we already had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss the following, in the area personnel, we discuss administrator contract issues, the high school principal position, custodial staffing, and employee discipline. We also discuss some confidential student matters, and we received information on construction matters and budget data. Okay, now, um, turn it over to Matt, Dr. Harris.
Information, and this is actually, um, every month, we usually have student of the month, but tonight is actually a special occasion because we're actually having teacher of the month, or better yet, teacher of the year, and that's how we consider our pride award winners, and that's why you see all my lovely staff members around. And tonight, we're going to honor them with the pride award, and I'm glad to have Scott as my assistant passing out the pride award. Do you want to show the audience what, what it looks like? I didn't open everyone's box because I was, I wanted you to have a pack in, but I figured I'll open up Karen's just to show, that's her kind of shelf.
Karen Young's spot, that's yours.
It's a great honor, and each and every day, they come in, they give 110%, and I always appreciate everything, every, every single thing they do. Um, the first one tonight is Karen Brown. Karen, can stand up and please come up front? Karen received an undergraduate degree from Slippery Rock University, her master's equivalency as well. Um, she's always taught in Penn Trafford School District, and this is her, um, 34th year of teaching here. When asked why she became a teacher, this is what she responded. The only thing that comes to mind when asked this question is her father. My father was a mathematics teacher for 38 years. During a talk about his students interacting with kids every day and seeing the difference he made in so many lives inspired me to become a teacher. I obvi- obviously did not follow in his footsteps of teaching math, but I have had the same rewarding experience as he did with my first graders for the past 34 years, and I can vouch that, um, Karen has an amazing job, as she had both my boys, and they always took the disdain, get off the bus and go see Karen first. We really appreciate that. And it's kind of unusual, after having the second one, you retire, so. Correlation with it. I appreciate everything that she does.
I like that, her dad was also a school director for 24 years.
And he did an excellent, excellent committee for the school district. Thank you, Karen. Next, for the elementary, we have Jen Lebecky. Early childhood, elementary education, and a concentration in French, which I did not know as we're adding it to the middle school. You might want to get, either get rid of that or continue with it. Jen has not worked anywhere else prior to Penn Trafford, and she's always taught grade five. Jen, how many years is this for you?
Uh, 16.
16 years? Okay. Um, when asked why she wanted to become a teacher, she's always wanted to be a teacher. She's enjoyed working with the kids, no two days are ever alike, and I appreciate Jen signing up for any workshop curriculum writing, she's always on the forefront of what we're doing, and always wants to do, um, more for the children, and I do appreciate that. Middle school winners, the first middle school winner is Keith Rager. Keith received his teaching degree from Waynesburg University. Um, he started in Penn Trafford as a tails teacher at Trafford Middle School. He has taught a variety of 6 to 8 grade courses, math, reading, science, social studies, and health, until the state changed requirements for teaching at the middle school. He is currently teaching math to grade 6 students. When asked why he wanted to become a teacher, he reported, I became a teacher because of the teacher role models I had as a student. I wanted to hopefully have the impact on my students, learning as my teachers had on me. I also saw the teaching process provides a different challenge on a daily basis. Keith was one of our very first teachers to incorporate the budget schools element by having a summer online course, and this summer, he is going to continue training teachers on technology, as he's one of my teacher leaders and staff development for the summer technology workshop, so I appreciate it, and thank you. And teaching with him this summer is our second, um, middle school winner, Jason Stewart. He's a proud Penn Trafford High School graduate, the class of 1991. He has a bachelor's of science in elementary education from California University of Pennsylvania, and he received a master's of curriculum instruction through Gannon University. Prior to Penn Trafford, he spent a year at Doran, and since he's been at Penn Trafford, he's taught 5th grade at McCullough, and currently he's teaching 6th grade at Penn Middle School. And when asked why he wanted to become a teacher, he replied, I became a teacher to make a difference in the lives of young people. It also gives me the chance to become a lifelong learner. I am lucky and blessed to be able to do it in my hometown, and we're very proud of everything that Jason does, and this summer, he's going to be attending the Social Studies Technology Conference, so, thank you for, he looked kind of surprised. Thank you. And the third middle school teacher is Carol Tinsley from Trafford Middle School. Carol actually received a degree from the University of Pittsburgh, where she earned a bachelor's degree in biology. A few years later, she decided to further her education and attended Cedar Hill University, where she earned her teaching certificate. Um, she has not worked anywhere else or taught anywhere else but Penn Trafford, however, she had jobs at the Dairy Queen, as a hostess, a waitress, a bartender, an ER registrar, and a dental assistant before she became a teacher, and I am glad she, um, became a teacher because she does a great job with her kids. Um, this is her, she's always taught grade 7 at Trafford Middle School, and when asked why she became a teacher, she's replied, my biggest influence becoming a teacher would be my mother-in-law. How most of us can't. How most of us can't. That was very nice. Maria Tinsley. I better be careful. She asked me to come to speak to her 6th to 8th class about our experience on a trip I took to the Amazon with fellow students from Pitt and Greensburg. After my presentation, Maria exclaimed that I did a great job presenting information to the students. As for some time and much contemplation, I decided to pursue a career in education. Thank you. In high school, is David, did he make it here tonight, Cornelius? Oh, there he is. I sometimes forget we have a whole hidden row down there where no one can see. I wish I would have known even then, because please put a frame. David can notice. David was high school winner. He received his degree from the IUP in 1996 with a BS in Education and Music Concentration on tuba. Prior to Penn Trafford, he has worked for Woodland Hills School District, Burgers Town Area School District, the Elizabeth Forrester School District, prior to joining PT in 2010. At Penn Trafford, he has taught the symphonic band, jazz band, marching band, percussion ensemble, fall color guard, music theory, music technology, marching band techniques, indoor percussion, and indoor color guard. When asked why did he become a teacher, he reported, "There are four people that motivated me to become a music teacher. The first is Mr. Jim Berry. He was my band director, and I hope I don't get this wrong, Cochrantham? Am I saying that correctly? Cochrantham High School, and is now the band director of Slippery Rock University. The second is Mr. Carl Miller. He was a graduate of Penn Trafford as well in 1985, who was also my band director at Cochrantham in 1990. Both of them have always showed such determination to teach the students to be great and a lover of what they did. Finally, he credits his parents that continue to support him to this day. They drove him to tuba lessons and band practices for so many years and did so much to help him get his degree. He will always appreciate what they have done for him and for being such great role models. And we are very fortunate that they provided you with great role models because you do an outstanding job with our band, and we're always appreciative of the amount of hours and dedication you put into it. So thank you." And he's always behind the camera, and tonight, he gets to come in front of the camera. It is with great pleasure that we have to, we're going to give Mr. Steve Benson the Pride of War for the high schools as well. And I did notice, I don't know if that's a coincidence. Steve had received his BA in Communications Media from IUP, his master's in Students of Fair and Higher Education from IUP, his MS in Business Education from Robert Morris, and his certifications include, certifications include English, Social Studies, Business, Computers, K-12, and Communications. Prior to Penn Trafford, he did not teach anywhere else, but he was employed by Walt Disney World for two different years. And he currently teaches Video 1, Video 2, Video 3, Video 4, and did dual enrollment with La Roche. When asked why he became a teacher, he reported, and I'm just warning you now, it's staples, it might be well. "Much of what I learned about teaching, I learned from my own teachers and from my wife, who was also a teacher. I can remember my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Spell, encouraged me and praised me when I completed a puzzle. The feeling of accomplishment I had from her words was something that I still remember 30 years later. In 3rd grade, I can recall Mr. DeCarlo telling me how to remember the way to spell the word together by breaking it down into "to get her." He had a knack for coming up with these little ways for remembering things. It's only now, looking back at it, that I can appreciate his methods. It was Mr. Bartleball, who most kids feared, who taught me that math could be fun and interesting. His ways of explaining and working through a math problem made it seem much easier to me, and I owe my later success in algebra and calculus to his early foundations for numbers and equations. Later on in high school, it was Mr. Stefanik who would have the most influence on my teaching career. Although I didn't know it at the time, Mr. Stefanik taught 8th grade, 9th grade, English, media class, stage crew. He was Elvis Presley in the annual Christmas pageant, he sang Blue Christmas, and he directed a senior play. I was lucky enough to have him for three classes and to spend a lot of extra time with him as a member of the play. It was his media class that influenced my choice of majors at IUP. I chose Communication Media because I found it fascinating. I loved going to the classes. Years later, after time spent working in marketing cells and even at Disney, I realized that something was missing. Seeing my wife teach kindergarten with joy and energy finally made me realize what I was missing and convinced me to make the change. The sense of fulfillment and pride she had after watching her students learn how to read and write was simply amazing. That's why I decided to go back to school to become a teacher. It was also her support and encouragement that helped me get through grade school, practice tests, and student teaching, and I always be grateful to her for that. I may never direct the next big blockbuster movie, but one of my students might. As the saying goes, a teacher affects eternally. He can never tell where his influence stops." And thank you, Steve, for that was outstandingly quick, and it kind of symbolizes what everyone does on a daily basis. So thank you. In addition to individual pride winners, we also have teaming with pride winners. And our first team is the SMILE team. So they can come up and actually kind of stand by Mr. Everyone, but you're in a larger group, you should be safe. Let me kind of explain what the SMILE team does. The SMILE team is from Sunrise Elementary School, and I appreciate the fact that Karen Coroner has showed up to support her team tonight. Thank you, Karen. The SMILE team is much deserving the Pride of War this year for their unwavering dedication to support the students of Sunrise. They initiated many new projects and support systems in order to benefit the students and families in the school. Karen, can you give us a quick scenario?
Sure. SMILE is actually just an acronym for the SAP team. And every school building has their own SAP team, or they've decided to name our SMILE, which is Sunrise Monitors Individual Learning Experiences. That's what it stands for. So SAP is a requirement by the state that we have to do, but this team, on their own, decided to meet once a week for 45 minutes, giving of their own time. And we meet and discuss kids that are referred through parents, teachers, myself, and we decide what interventions we can provide to kids in order to benefit their learning. And they gave enormous amounts of themselves and energy and time in order to make sure that we were meeting all the kids' needs in the building. So I really, really thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Now, we're going to go over some of my, if anybody knows, I'm going to read everything. Lauren Trail. Where's Lauren? She obtained her bachelor's degree in psychology from St. Vincent College in 2004. In 2009, she graduated from California University of Pennsylvania with a master's degree in school counseling. She is certified in secondary and elementary school counseling, and she is also a National Board Certified Counselor. She graduated Sumakum Lawy from St. Vincent and California University. And you're also a PT graduate. What was your, I remember this, what was your grade point average from PT?
4.27.
4.27. I remember that from the interval. So it does make a difference on your GPA, kids. Prior to working at Penn Trafford, she worked at East Allegheny, and she worked at Intermediate Unit 1 as a non-public elementary and secondary school counselor, and she started with us in 2012. She serves Harrison Park, Level Green, Sunrise, and McCullough. When asked why she wanted to become a teacher, she reported she became counselor, she corrected me, a teacher, because she has always loved children. When I was in high school, I babysat Austin, volunteered with the children's programs at my church, and had a summer job working in the playground program. I was also the one that my friends always turned to for advice and guidance. Due to my love of children and a want to help others, I chose to pursue psychology for my undergraduate degree, and it went on to give my master's in school counseling. Jody Dimaselli. And Jody's new to our staff this year. She earned her BA in Psychology from Duquesne University. She received her master's degree from Child Psychology and postmaster certificate in school psychology from Duquesne University. Prior to Penn Trafford, she worked as a school psychologist at the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind Children for four years. She became a school psychologist to facilitate learning for all children by promoting a healthy educational and social environment at schools. She works to translate her assessment and information into the inventions that that team can utilize to foster student success. She further tries to positively impact the social and behavioral health of students through psychological consultation and counseling. Carrie Guthwell. Carrie's also a Penn Trafford graduate in 1997. What is your grade point average?
It was around 3.4 something.
3.4?
It was more into the artsy stuff.
Artsy stuff? I wonder why. She went to IUP, where she received a bachelor's degree in 2000 and a master's degree in literacy in 2007. She has not worked, taught anywhere else other than Penn Trafford, where she started as a day-to-day substitute in the school district for three years. She held full longer subbing positions, 2nd grade at Level Green, 3rd grade at McCullough, and 5th grade at Trafford. For the past seven years, she has taught 5th grade at Sunrise Elementary. When asked why she was a teacher, became a teacher, "I became a teacher because I always enjoyed learning and teaching people new things. I have a sister who is 10 years younger than me, and she usually needed help with her homework and projects. I like trying to come up with ways to help her remember concepts, prepare for a test, and I felt so successful. When she was successful at things, I helped her with them. I wanted her to have a job where I could provide students with a feeling of accomplishment every day." Deja Barton. Deja has her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Duquesne University and her master's degree in special education from California University. Prior to Penn Trafford, she worked in the McKeesport School District. She was an aide in a long-term sub at the Norrigan School District and a long-term substitute for the Bethel Park School District. During her time at Penn Trafford, she has taught 6th to 8th grade learning support at Penn Middle and learning support at Sunrise grades K-5, as well as a year in grade 1. Next year, should be going back to the classroom and teaching grade 2. When asked, "She became a teacher because I had a high school teacher that really inspired me and gave me the courage to do what I love." Very nice. Amber. Where's Amber Urick? Amber is a graduate from Slippery Rock University. She has her major in elementary education, early childhood education, and a matter in special education. And Edivore, she's getting her, she received her master's in elementary and early childhood education. She has always worked at Penn Trafford since she started student teaching here. During the time she's taught, she's taught many higher grades and subject grades, but mainly 3rd grade, as well as kindergarten, 1st grade, and 2nd grade, and she was also a RIS teacher and worked in the life field room. Amber became a teacher because all the smiling faces are always positive, young hearts eager to learn, and volumes of intriguing questions asked daily. That is why I became a teacher. Since I was a young child myself, using the staircase as cubbies and disciplining my stuffed animals, I have never-
It's a true story.
I have never wanted to be anything less than the most valued thing to a child, other than their parents, the best teacher in the world. Students are always eager and willing to push boundaries when it comes to how hard they can work. Being the person to help my students delve into a good novel and pull out all skills they need without knowing it, provided them with a variety of ways to solve mathematic equations so they were never stuck, and to be the one that who attends extracurricular activities to connect with them on a different level, are just as few of the rewards of a gift of being a teacher and creating a lifelong connection. And also, Amber, how many grants did you write for Penn Trafford School District since you worked here?
I think I'm at 28.
She's at 28 grants that she wrote.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars. I always appreciate that, and I always take notice of that, too. Which is good. And Linda Kelly. I just kind of randomly shuffled these. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of Pittsburgh. She studied through Gannon University for a master's of curriculum instruction. She has only worked with Penn Trafford School District. She taught, she student taught at Level Green Elementary, and she worked as an aide in the preschool that's located in our Penn Trafford High School for about three years. In 1999, she started teaching grade 2 at Sunrise and has been there ever since. She became a teacher because of her 6th grade math teacher, Mrs. Sharon Chambers, who inspired her. She made learning interesting and fun for all her students. We also have Jen LeBecky, and she's a double winner tonight, and she was part of the individual readers. I won't have to read her. I'll read it one more time, I'm going to roll here. I'm just reading, I know Penguin Games. I'm very lucky to have Mary Beth Smythe. She has passed the Pride of War from Harrison Park last year to the teachers at Sunrise for their SMILE. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can keep it.
And if we can give them a round of applause. Now, the next team, we only have two. It should go a little bit quicker. The next winners, we have a team from Trafford Middle School representing the bowling program. And I have to tell you that the bowling program, as you know, is ongoing. It does not stop. It is not something that you do once and you're done with it. It is something that you do each and every day. It is something that takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment. I'm sure it's not always easy trying to sort out all the details and complaints and following the forms and doing the resolutions, but it's that commitment that they do that makes the program successful and makes it work. And I want to give the Pride of War this year to Megan McBraw in Stacey, Amana. Megan has her bachelor's of science degree from Penn State University in elementary education. She also has her master's of education degree from California University of Pennsylvania in school counseling K-12. Prior to working at Penn Trafford, she was a 1st grade teacher, and I hope I spell this say this right, Didier, or how do you say it?
Didier.
Okay. International School in Bangkok, Thailand. I then moved to Erie, Pennsylvania. Was that a big difference?
Not too much.
Where I was a substitute teacher in the Erie School District for three years. I moved back to home and was a substitute teacher, school counselor, in the McKeesport Area School District for 10 years before starting at Penn Trafford. I have been the school counselor at Trafford School since 2010. I decided to become a school counselor while teaching in the McKeesport Area School District. I constantly found myself helping the students with their social, personal issues that they were facing in their daily lives. Many of my students were under a lot of family pressure and stress and needed a lot more support with these issues that they would bring with them to school. Now, as a school counselor, I am able to support my students with their social, emotional needs as well as their academic needs. Being a school counselor is a challenging and rewarding position that forces me the opportunity to interact with and support all students, parents, teachers, and administrators. Stacy. Stacy received her BA in Art Education at Carlow University, and she also received her master's in education and curriculum instruction from Edinburgh University. She began her career at the Penn Trafford School District as a long-term substitute in the fall of 1997, and she has taught visual arts degrees 1 through 12 of various buildings ever since. Currently, she is teaching at Trafford Middle School and Trafford Elementary School. She became, and she also serves as our head teacher. She has a lot of extra responsibilities at the bowling, and I do appreciate it because I've called her several times. More importantly than letter grades is the ability to allow students to grow. And I don't want a child's ability to self-work to be based on testing. My hope in becoming a teacher is to touch every student in such a way that my teachers did. I want each to grow in a respectful, member of society, and to understand his or her own unique ability to make decisions and solve real problems. I want students to think back at school and remember me, not just for the projects they made in my class, but as someone who's taught them something about life. And at this time, we have our winner, and they've been waiting patiently. Thank you so much. A winner from last year's Pride Award winner, Steve Weir and Mr. Ryan Highland. They won for the Social Studies Team at Penn Middle, and they are going to present them with the Pride.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do appreciate Brian and Steve coming out. Who else is attending? Who wants to attend the conference this year with Jason? Is it Steve?
Myself.
That's what I thought. So Steve will also be attending the Social Studies Technology Conference. And this is nice to see Steve because this is his third year in a row. First, he won as an individual winner, then he won as a team winner, and now he's coming to help pass it off. So it was nice, three years of the Triathlon, so thank you.
I remember Steve as like a six-year-old, okay? This tiny little kid on a swim team. It's amazing. Can I tell him about the swim team, little speedo?
All right, and next, and I'm going to actually let- All right, and next, and I'm going to actually let Scott take over. Scott, I'm going to let you take over the pride winners of the high school, and he actually, we have something, we have a visual for you too as well, as far as his pride award demonstration.
Well, we have Tiffany Stewart and Lou McCracken. Come on up, guys. These guys are the high school teaming with pride award recipients, and it is because of what they have done in their classroom, which is truly remarkable. You know, we can go back a few years ago. We took a trip to downtown STEM Academy, took a busload of teachers, and then they came back with so many great ideas, innovative ideas on how to teach math differently than what is traditionally done. You're never going to find these two standing in front of the room lecturing. You're never going to find them doing problems on the board. You're never going to find them going over homework problems. These guys got these kids engaged and immersed in mathematics like you've never seen it before. Kids truly love going to math class. Kids who traditionally have not been good math students and have not done well in math actually love math now. We started off with what we call I algebra one. We've moved into I geometry right now, and the following year, we're going to move it into I algebra two. And as I said, they are doing so many neat things. In this past year, we went out to Hershey, and we watched Dan Meyer, who's a leading educator on really looking at mathematics from an inquiry-based standpoint and asking good questions and quality questions about what math is, and they, using multimedia and videos to teach these concepts, looking really at what mathematics is and how it's, instead of the plug-and-chug philosophy, going over problems and just plugging and chugging, drilling, killing homework, they're really understanding the math behind the numbers, and that's what's making it different for these kids. They understand what math is all about as opposed to the numbers and just finding the plug, the chug, the formula, and the procedure to get to it. They understand what's happening in math, and they find, found so many creative ways to do it. And some of the, what's even better is what they're doing is they organize PLC meetings in the mornings where they meet with a group of teachers and show these different ideas. It doesn't just apply to math. It can apply to social studies, science, and all the other disciplines to meet with those teachers, to spread those kinds of ideas and those concepts of learning. And it's really been a great opportunity for other teachers to learn. Throw some workshops together this summer, invite more teachers to learn this way. They presented at the Westmoreland IU to all the Westmoreland County Schools on their practices. We probably have, what, eight, ten different visits probably from, I don't know, six, seven, eight different schools. Some have come back multiple times to learn what they've been doing and to emulate it and to put it within their schools. They're going to the Pittsburgh STEM Summit, which is this coming Friday. They went last year and presented their practice there, so they're just getting a lot of interest and they're, I'm telling you, they're on the map in terms of 21st century learning and how to teach math in a different way. This board out here, it kind of is their map of what they, this I geometry board out there, right? It kind of maps out some of the activities and things that they do. The kids are able to see that, they look at that, they know what to do from one day to the next. It's neat. If you ever want to come up and see what they're doing, you're welcome to come. They invite anybody to come in and see what's happening. Kids love math, and it's neat to see. Well deserved. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. I do, Lou has his BS in Education from IUP. He's spent eight years in Chesterfield County Schools in Richmond, Virginia, prior to coming to Penn Trafford. He currently teaches I algebra, I geometry. In the past, he's talked, is that it? I can't say it.
Pretty much everything.
Yes, pretty much everything on the list. He became a teacher because he really enjoyed helping others, problem solve, and thinks logically. And Tiffany, and it was nice to have a husband and wife winner tonight. We're making all these perks for the pride awards. I mean, it's really good. Record-breaking night. Bachelor's degree in Mathematics from the University of Pittsburgh, Master's degree in Math Education from the University of Pittsburgh. She hasn't worked anywhere else but Penn Trafford, and she currently teaches a great deal of many classes. And she became a teacher to help students better understand math and see how much fun it can actually be. Thank you. And at this time, and he's still here, and I know, I'll be quick because he had a couple games ago tonight, but I guess I would pass the time. Carrie, I'm sorry. Carrie Hetrick, who won last year with relay marks for athletics. Pass off the report. We're going to take a few minutes for press photos and cupcakes, and we're back to the meeting, so if the winners can come.
All right, let's reconvene, please. All right, we're turning it back over to Matt.
All right, next week, under Athletics and Curricular, accept resignations, approve volunteer coaches, approve opening of coaching positions, approve adoption of the rifle club. Budget and finance. Approve CWCTC budget for 2014, 2015. Approve CWCTC 2014, 2015 anticipation loan. Approve CWCTC resolution to salvage capital reserve fund. Approve conference participation rates for 2014, 2015. Elect a treasurer for 2014, 2015. Approve expenditures relating to high school renovation for April 2014. Tentatively adopt preliminary budget for 2014 to 2015. And this is a line action item, so go to tab two in the book.
Okay, Mr. Katassik, you're on.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to authorize the advertisement and solicitation of bids for the renovations to Penn Trafford High School project.
Second. Question.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Katassik.
Under Buildings and Grounds and Safety, and Employee Relations negotiates transportation, there will be nothing to report. Food Service, award the bid for their food service. Approve breakfast lunch prices for 2014, 2015 school year. Approve milk prices for 2014, 15 school year. Under Personnel and Curriculum, approve substitute teachers and support personnel. Authorization, authorization to issue reasonable insurance, employee notices, employee summer help. Approve leave requests, approve student-teacher assignments, approve 2014 calendar revisions, approve conference requests, approve textbook purchases. AP World History, she's actually going with World Civilization, Global Experience, and then she's also doing a desk copy of Ways of the World. So she has two different books that she's actually going to prove and tie into the curriculum.
These books are going to be available for your review, so if you have any concern about textbooks, please go to the admin building.
Admin Building.
Admin Building and review them.
Ma'am, how long will they be on display for?
We display them all during the week, and then we always have them on display at any time. They can come to the admin building or the high school and get a textbook to check it Under Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Accept and File Information Committee Meeting, minutes of April 7, 2014. Approve graduation list for the class of 2014. Under Taxes and Insurance Consenses, approved vehicle economic revatulation tax assistance act.
That's only if the township has passed their permission.
We did recognize, recognition of visitors.
Okay, do I have a motion for a German? We don't need a motion, right? Or do we need one?
You can rule.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion for a German?
So you make that motion.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Eight-thirty, I'll make this. Thank you.